Thank you, Shirley. We are honored tonight to have, I said two, four, six, I have written down 10, but I think we have nine of the 11 candidates. If I can see everybody. Running for city council district offices with us. And I believe Matt Barr is actually here representing his brother, which I would say is probably one of the, he owes you one. I mean, if you're standing in, he definitely owes you one. We realize that you all have busy lives in addition to being a candidate, and so we'll try to move this along as expeditious as we can. The candidates are sitting by district. From your left to right, District 1 through 5, 5 being closest to me. Each candidate will be given 90 seconds to introduce himself or herself. I will then ask the first question, and each candidate will have up to 1 and 1/2 minutes to respond unless the questions, as we go on, are directed to a specific person or district. Sue, who is in the front row, will let you know when you have 30 seconds left. We don't have a hook, but I do have a really hard stare. Okay? If you go over. The initial questions will reflect input from the two sponsoring organizations. Cards are available to those who want, may want to submit a question in writing, and Charlie and Sharon will collect, or Dennis will collect those and put them together, and we'll try to intersperse those questions with those from the organizations. The forum will end no later than 8:15, and may be over sooner depending on the questions and interest. And now, I will turn it over to the far end, and we'll let you pass this down as you go, and introduce yourselves, and then we'll have the questions.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Sierra Club for having this thing, giving us an opportunity to come out and try to share some of our views that we have with the concerns that this group has. I am Daskel Bunch, the District 1 Councilman. Just finishing my first term, running for reelection. Very proud of what we've got started in East Columbus, and actually central downtown. I don't, I have more than just East Columbus, but we have got a lot of things going on. There's got a lot of things that I want to finish up. Mainly is the State Street organization that has been started, and the Ninth Street area is a very valid part of my area. So I'm just looking forward to continuing the work that myself and a lot of other people has put into it the last three years. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd also like to say thank you to my fellow candidates, my peers in the audience. Welcome Mayor Fred Armstrong. My name is Christopher Rutan. I am a candidate for City Council District 1. I live over in the Ninth and Wilson area, as Mr. Bunch said, or Daskel. Just don't call him too late for dinner is what I've been told. The thing about it is, we want to see the improvement, and we have, we still have a lot to do. I will give it my best to run a clean campaign. As far, everybody keeps asking, what do you have against Daskel Bunch? I have nothing against him, and I make that clear to everyone. I want to serve my community. I have been organizer for the Ninth Street Festival, met with the mayor many times over trying to get everything established, all the progress, everything that's been done. I do thank Mr. Bunch for, and I do thank my peers for, and I would appreciate your vote come in May.
Good evening. I want to thank the Sierra Club and Energy Matters Coalition, members of the public for being here tonight. My name is Ryan Brand. I'm the current City Council Representative for the 2nd District. I'm a father and a husband. I have three beautiful daughters, born and raised here in Columbus. This community has had a huge impact on my thoughts and opinions. My family has a history of service, and I feel like it's really important as a community member to try to give back all that this community has given to me. So, over the last 12 years, I've served on any number of boards, committees, and commissions, whether it's the Arts Council or the Park Board, and that brought me up to running for City Council three years ago. I've been very proud to be able to be the representative for the 2nd District, and if I'm given the honor to continue to do that, it's my pledge to continue to protect the quality of life in Columbus, to pursue economic development, and to represent the 2nd District as best I can in the people who live in my district and in the community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me today. This is my very first debate, so I'm very excited to be here. My name is Elaine Wagner, and I was born and raised here in Columbus, Indiana, by my parents, Ryan and Jean Ho. I graduated from IU in 2009, and that's when I moved back to Columbus. I live here with my husband, Christian Wagner. He and I got married in 2011 at the courthouse here in Columbus, and our anniversary is actually Wednesday. That's not a part of it, but anyway. I'm running for City Council because I want to bring new perspectives to Columbus leadership, and I want to help grow, work together to grow Columbus into prosperity. By 2020, 50% of the workforce is going to be millennials, so I think it's time we stepped up and started being leaders, as well as getting involved with our community and getting engaged and starting to contribute in a real way. So, that's why I'm running. And this May, I'm not actually going to have any competition in the primary, but I would appreciate your vote in November.
My name is Frank Jerome. This is my first term. I've been in Columbus since '71. My wife sat in the same council seat with Fred Armstrong. She started when he did. So, I think we're the only husband and wife team that have held a council seat. I'm very proud of the council. The council is made up of a diverse group of people that have vast different skills, and when we come together, we come with good results. People that know what they're doing in one area will teach the others. There's so many things left to do, but economic development is one of my favorite things, and one of the sources of pride is getting the housing at the airport. I worked on that for three years, even before I became a councilman, and I think that will double with the IU School of Design and all the different universities we have, and I think that'll be a huge economic driving force in this community in the next 10 years. We go from 9,000 to 20,000 people, probably. So I'm really proud of the universities. My district doesn't get a lot because we seem to be a kind of a bedroom community for all the people, where they sort of take care of themselves. But the core of the town is very important, so downtown is the way to go. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Russ Polling. I'm running for City Council in District 3. I came here 15 years ago. I retired from the U.S. Air Force after 20 years of service, and I could have picked any number of towns to move to, because when you retire, the military will send you wherever you want to go in the 50 United States. Why, I chose Columbus, Indiana. It's a great town to live in. I love living here. When we moved here with my wife Judy, who's been put up, who has put up with me for 31 years, which I thank her for that. We had two young children when we moved here, well, now they're grown. One is a college graduate, and one will be a college graduate in three weeks. Looking forward to that. As a matter of fact, the last Saturday before the election is her graduation, and I told her I had to make a decision. Do I campaign or come to your graduation? She knew the answer. I'll be campaigning. No, I'm kidding. No, we'll be going to Evansville to watch her walk across the stage. So, why do I want to run for City Council? Well, I want to, you know, serve my community the best way I can, and I've been working for the last year on the Columbus Redevelopment Commission as a commissioner. I've really enjoyed doing that. It was a pleasure to work with Councilman Bunch on the State Street Implementation Plan and hope to see that move forward. And I just want to make sure all of Columbus is taken care of and not just downtown, especially our little bedroom community, where actually I only have to drive two miles to work. So, thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight in a cool and maybe a little bit rainy evening. There's a lot of other things you could be doing, maybe watching Netflix at home or something in the comfort of your living room. So, thanks for coming out. I'm Justin Hohn. I'm running in District 4. That's the north part of town, up by the airport. I came to Columbus in 2008. We closed on our home the Monday after the flood, so welcome to Columbus and all the great luck I bring with us. I came to Columbus after 14 years of service in the U.S. Air Force, so Russ and I had a near-life experience in the Air Force. I graduated from the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs in the year 2000 with a degree in political science. I have my MBA from IUPUC here in town. Finished that up this last summer. I'm running for City Council because I think we could do a little better, and I was just concerned that the representation in the council didn't reflect all the huge parts of the community, you know, people like me who have younger children, and, you know, I've got a five-year-old and a 10-year-old. It's hard when you have those other commitments to find the time to get as much community involvement as you like, so a lot of people aren't able to do that. I think that somebody needed to step up, and I figure if not me, then who? So, here I am.
Thank you all for coming out. My name is Matt Barr, not Nathan Barr. I am his representative, and you're right, he does owe me big time. I'm going to do my best this evening to answer the questions according to how he would have liked them to be answered, so I'm going to try to answer verbatim, because I don't want anything to get lost in translation. Just a little bit about Nathan, though. He believes in a reliable, efficient government that allows for the voices of those in its care to be heard by promoting involvement and considering all input regardless of party affiliation. And one of his biggest interests includes the continual growth of the city in parallel with ever-changing world around it. He believes in technology, and he believes that it's an ever-growing aspect of society and plans on integrating it appropriately. He is currently employed by Cummins, but he is also a veteran of the United States Navy. He was deployed to Afghanistan as a corpsman in the 3rd Battalion of the 1st Marine Regiment. He was born and raised in Columbus, and he has a nine-year-old son, Cameron.
Thank you for having us. My name is Tim Shoffitt, and I am the current representative from the 5th District in the City of Columbus City Council. It's been a privilege and honor to serve the city for the past four years, and I really look forward to being able to continue the work that we've started. I will continue to promote economic development within our city and try to create opportunities through that so that we do not have to increase taxes on the citizens. I think we're overtaxed as it is. I think physical responsibility is important for all of us, and we have limited dollars, and so we have to use those dollars the best we can. And finally, I think it's just important to be a good voice for the people of the 5th District, and I hope to represent them again the next four years. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all again. The first question is, would you support higher efficiency standards in new local home construction or remodels? And related to that, would you support zoning rules to encourage south-facing roofs in new developments for possible future solar installations?
I think anytime that you start implementing more zoning changes and things of that nature, it is something that we have to watch out for. We talk about housing. One of our biggest issues in our community is the lack of affordable housing, and I think additional regulations, additional changes of that type will affect them greatly. I think those type of changes have to occur at the state level, and then it needs to fall back into the communities. I think if a developer wants to go out and to propose that type of development at his cost, I think that's more than fair to do, but I don't think it would be the right thing to do is to implement those changes broad-based unless it was across every community base.
Any increase in efficiency standards would ultimately result in a greener way of life in Columbus, and Nathan wholly supports that, and he believes that if we can include a way that would encourage future growth and development towards renewable energy, that would be great as well.
You know, my mother-in-law's a pretty wise woman. She has a saying that says, "You can have anything you want, but you can't have everything." And unfortunately, the nature of a lot of government actions is that it's zero-sum. If I spend money here, I don't have that money to spend it here. And if I increase this, then I often can't increase something else. I think we'd all agree we want more energy efficiency. That seems kind of an uncontroversial assertion, so the debate for me is really, how do you go about that? And where should that decision be made? For me, the decision should be made with the individuals, right? We each have the right to upgrade our homes at our own expense, but when energy standards are inflicted, homes do get more expensive, and it does raise the cost of living. And let's ask, who bears the cost of that inefficiency? Well, it's the person living in the dwelling or renting that place, right? Anything that we could do to consolidate economic decisions in a governing body implies that that government body knows best. And I apologize if I frequently refer to dead economists, but that's who I read a lot of. You know, Friedrich Hayek said, "The problem with that is that it assumes that you can aggregate all the knowledge in a central location quickly enough to act on it," and that you have all the information available to make wise decisions. And unfortunately, that's just not true. All the information needed to make wise economic decisions is individually held by the people who are living their lives each day. So I think that's best at the individual level.
Okay. High-efficiency standards should be encouraged best we can, and I think already at the state and federal level through the taxing system, they do offer some incentives. But I think it'd be very hard to regulate at a local level to have you put these kinds of standards, especially if you're doing a remodel. Who's going to check up? Who's going to regulate it? Would we have people coming by after you remodeled your kitchen to make sure you put in the right insulation? I think that would be such a burden on the zoning, the code enforcement people. There's just no way this city could do it. And as for southern-facing roofs, we can encourage that, but we should never try to require that, because then you're telling somebody, yeah, you can build a house, but this is how it's going to look. And we don't want to tell somebody, you know, in that much detail. And you also have to think about where you're going to put that house. Could you put a southern-facing roof on that lot? For example, where my house is built, due to the dimensions of the lot, my roof is east-west. There is no way you could do a north-south roof on my property. So if we were to start requiring people, they wouldn't be able to build it on the land they have. So that's all I have to say on that.
Our president has said that they would want to require energy-efficient windows before you can sell your home. So all of a sudden, somebody might have a $2,000 bill they're going to have to come up with to sell their house. I think the price should reflect whether the windows are there or not, and then the new people have to decide that. Southern-facing, we don't have any straight streets in here. Even if you go out to Shadow Creek Farms, the streets are made to be curved so that they, there's an interest in the community. The new developments out at Tipton Lakes, the topography decides where they're going to be, whether they're going to be south-facing, east-facing. And you'd have a tiki-taki look of places if you had all south-facing windows or roofs. So, that's just not something that can be done. I think too much regulation, too much zoning has caused housing to be so expensive here. People don't live in Columbus, and that's one of our problems.
So, this is actually a pretty easy question for me to answer, since anybody who knows me knows that I'm very supportive of anything green, green initiatives. So, I would definitely be in favor of incentivizing energy efficiency, maybe not so far as to say that we would create standards, because I don't want to create any barriers for anyone who's wanting to build a home. I don't want to necessarily make it more expensive, but I would, I wouldn't say no to incentivizing these type of changes, helping Columbus move forward in a really environmentally responsible way. I think when you invest that initial money to make your at-home more energy efficient, you recoup that investment through the savings in your utility bills, and so in the long run, everyone wins. I think that with long-term planning, first, I think I am a very big proponent of long-term planning over the short-term thinking aspect of that.
How many people out here know about the energy code that went into effect last year for new homes? New energy code, right? Thick walls, insulation, minimum R-values. So, it's already being passed down. You know, it's already happening. I mean, I, and, you know, with my family's lumberyard, we had to go through a learning curve with all of our customers to get to understand what new energy codes were going to look like for people. And it was tough. I mean, people were out there, were very used to building houses based on the minimum energy codes that had always been in existence, and they changed those R-values. And people had to make decisions about how they were either going to construct their homes, or how they were going to have their homes tested to meet the minimum requirements for R-values on their homes. So, the process is happening. I mean, we already see it every day. Code enforcement already does it now. So, new construction, if you go out there and somebody's building a new house, code enforcement already goes out there to look at the construction type, or to find out whether or not they're going to be tested after the fact to make sure they meet the minimum R-values. Now, as far as solar on southern-facing roofs, I think it's a fantastic idea. I'm not sure how you can regulate that, but I think to try to figure out some way to create incentives for people to create developments that will have southern-facing roofs for solar, I think that's where you're going to get the buy-in for that.
I just have one statement to make. I'm using a cheat sheet because I, this is the only thing I can think of. In the last few months, my electric bill has skyrocketed to thousands of dollars, not hundreds, thousands. I had to get an additional part-time job just to pay that. Would I support the new ordinances, would solar roofs, anything like that? Yes, I would, because I believe the resources are there, but I believe we're not using I don't think it ought to be a time of waste in money if we take a look at it as a council, as a planner, and say, oh, we can't do this, then just to move on. But if the resource is there, I cannot be adamant enough, we need to use the availability.
Well, it's going to be hard. I'm going to probably just repeat what most people said, so I won't bore you with that. I totally agree with everything we can do to save energy and help out to be a little bit more efficient, and I would support that. I don't think it should be mandated. I would be against walking up to someone and telling them that they have to do something. I think it should be a choice, just like the recycling that came to Columbus. It's a great thing. It's going over real well, but people are jumping on board as we go along. So I think, I think with the energy thing, we'd be the same way. We would have to let them make a decision of what type of homes they wanted, what type of, which way the roof faced, if they were able to do that. So I would not oppose any of it. I would support all of it to a point, but again, I think it should be a self-prefered vision to letting people decide on what they want to do, just like the recycling.
Okay. Next question is, Columbus has many empty commercial and industrial buildings, many of which have set empty for years. How would you support infill development of those buildings? What kind of incentives would you give to make that happen? And how would you combat the sprawl that continues to happen in the Columbus area?
Okay. I totally agree that we have way too many empty buildings, but I think that starts, we've got to start with the City Hall. We've got to work together. We've got to go out and we've got to invite people to come in and look at those buildings instead of trying to address the issue of building brand-new buildings. We have a lot of good buildings that's still usable. We have to get them here, and we've got to show them to them, and we've got to come up with incentives to help them out. What those incentives would be, I have no idea, other than a tax abatement at this point. But I wouldn't, I would be very honored to get people to move in and take care of some of those used buildings. Like I said, I know just in my area, I've got more than what just probably the whole city has as far as empty commercial buildings in District 1. So, like I said, I'm totally behind getting those buildings filled up and keeping them full and get people to work in again that want to work. So that would be my stance on that. We'd have to come up with a council and the mayor to come up with a solution as far as what kind of incentivized tax abatements we could do.
The quick answer is what he said. I agree. We have way too many empty buildings. We have a lot of architecture in the city. Now it's time to take the buildings that we have, and we need to make those noticeable. I agree with the tax abatement plan that we need to, if we get any responsible corporation and they say, okay, we want to build 100,000 square foot on this piece of land, let's offer them something else, or come up with a different idea, starting at City Hall, and say, hey, what's your reasoning? Why do you have to build a new building? Why are you so adamant? I think we need to go with what we got and expand from there, and if we run out of places, then we run out of places and we can allow new construction. But as far as I'm concerned, and as District 1, like Daskel said, no new construction.
Okay. So, we kind of started building a blueprint for mixed-use redevelopment downtown, and I think we need to continue that. We need to take a look at what we've done, where we've got mixed retail and residential spaces in existing buildings, and we need to try to figure out how we apply that to other buildings and other parts of our community. And I think that starts with conversations with property owners and developers in town. So, they're going to have some desires and some needs in order to make that happen so that it's financially viable, and I think it's going to be important for City Hall and the council to have open dialogues with them to find out how we make that attractive for them so that they can begin diversifying that type of development with existing buildings. It might be tax abatement, it might not. That's certainly a tool that the council has used before, but I think that there are probably other incentives that we can create and be creative with, with property owners to try to get some mixed-density infill with some of the existing properties that we have in our city.
So, sprawl is very bad for the city. It creates pollution and traffic congestion and water shortages. So, I think there's a lot of things that we could do to combat this, one of which is building up, right? Vertical growth versus horizontal growth. Incentivizing businesses who want to come here to invest millions of dollars, things like tax abatements are things that we could use, tools we could use to incentivize these businesses to invest into these empty buildings and spend money into revitalizing them, right, and bringing them back. And creating a walkable city. So, turning Columbus into an area where we have a lot of mixed-use buildings is key, where you can have a building that is not only an apartment, but also a parking garage and also an office space. That way, people can be centrally located. In addition, there's all kinds of things like using alternate methods of transportation, having buses, having bikes, making it easy for people to get places. This is just a few things that we could do. Thanks.
I'm surprised nobody brought up Kroger. We had an industrial site. We gave a minimal tax abatement. We had an industrial site, we gave a minimal tax abatement to turn that site into a major retail area. Already, before the building that's there is torn down, the land around it has become more valuable. So, that whole area is being revitalized through a minor tax abatement. But our infill is not as many buildings out there as you think there are. And you can see what's happening at the Fair Oaks Mall. They're repurposing some of that property. Many of the places can't be repurposed, partly because the codes, they're not that energy-efficient. The sprawl, we have a very unusual community. We have all these rivers running through it, and we can't build everywhere we want to build, and so, we're forced to build where we can, and that makes things look like they're sprawling out. But we have to have housing where we can. We don't have a nice reservoir of flat land to build homes on. So, I think people don't understand how bad some of the buildings are, and they just need to be torn down and start it over. And we have a limit to how high we can build them, you know? There's only so many floors you're allowed.
Of course, I would like to see...
You couldn't hear me?
Yeah, you were really good.
I was.
Can you hear me? I would never say that about my worthy opponent. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually I don't need a microphone. Of course, I would like to see, now, I can't say that I was copying off anybody because I wrote my answer down before I came here. It was a busy day. I would like to see the empty buildings that we do have reused, if possible, instead of building new ones, because we do probably have some buildings around here, and like Frank said, and I am copying a little bit Frank, that probably some of them aren't up to code, and if they're not up to code and they're not usable, we need to encourage the owner to demolish them, or bring them up to code, and it's probably cheaper to demolish it. And we could also look at, you know, we talk about combat sprawl. Maybe some of these buildings that are to the point where they cannot be used again, maybe we can knock them down and make some green space. Because we are running out of, I hate to copy the term shovel-ready, but there is not a whole lot of land around here where we can build something new. And if we try to take all the available land, we won't have any green space. And I think it's important that we have parks, because they add to the quality of life, and we want to make sure we have a good balance between commercial buildings, residential, and green space.
Yeah, I, I think I'd take a little bit of a different tack perhaps. You know, offering a tax incentive, a tax abatement to someone who's got a property that's vacant seems to me perhaps a little backwards, because one of the reasons it's vacant is because the cost of leaving it vacant is so low, right? I've got a property of a certain amount of value, it doesn't, it's no skin off, off my knuckles to let it sit there and rot and decay, very little incentive to rent it out. But if there's a tax penalty of some sort for the decay, well, then now I have an incentive to lower the cost of the selling price, to get it out of the market, get a business in there of some kind, and get it generating some kind of income. And at some point, maybe a, a tax lien could be placed on the property, and then the city would be able to assume possession of that and eliminate it under a blight-type program. So, you know, we, we need to be very careful when we talk about incentives and disincentives, and focus not just, not just on what's visible, but on what is also the secondary and tertiary effects of an action, right? Because a lot of times, there are certain things that make sense, but the, when you look at it in the broader perspective, you know, policies can kind of work against themselves if we're, if we're not careful. So, it's important to think through very carefully.
I'm going to, I'm going to read this from first person so that, to avoid any confusion. So, one of my biggest concerns is that we, as a city, strengthen and maintain what we have before we try to grow and expand. If we don't have a firm foundation, we can't properly develop for future needs. The empty buildings, whether they be houses, warehouses, or otherwise, need to be assessed for their structural integrity and usability. Depending on ownership and condition of the properties in question, and comparing and contrasting the cost of renovating versus redeveloping the property, I would drive interest towards the most cost-effective solution for utilizing the property. This would also help to combat sprawl by essentially reusing property that has already been developed as opposed to using currently undeveloped property.
When you talk about city government and how they can help control this, you've got to look at the different departments that are involved here. Community development has to take the initiative to help market these, these properties that are vacant or are not being used at this point in time, and find users for those properties. The other person is the planning and zoning, and sometimes we may have to change the zoning for each property to identify the best use for it, so it may be a mixed-use or, that's been talked about. But finally is, it is, you've got to incentivize it, so tax abatements and things like that to get people to go in there, or to at least look at them as an option to go at it. It's not a tax abatement, a tax abatement for the existing owner, but for the new owner to get them to look at the property and move in there and use that property. When we talk about sprawl, I think unfortunately, we are in a bad situation here. Our, geographically, we are pushed out because of the limitations we have along our waterways and things of that nature. So, it, it's hard to control that sometimes, but if we look at our existing empty structures and try to reuse them and repurpose them, then we can help combat it.
Okay, the next question has been alluded to, to some extent. What, if anything, should the city do to manage flood hazards from Haw Creek or any of the other rivers in Columbus, for that matter? Would you support having Haw Creek designated as a regulated drain to be controlled by the county drainage board? And what effect do the local floodplain revisions have on the city?
Well, one of the, of course, this is a multi-purpose, or a multi-question, question When we talk about flooding, it has had a, a great impact on our city in our land use. We have to go back and reevaluate those areas that are in the floodplain, flood fringe, and identify where we can build and cannot build in those areas. So, yes, it has had a negative impact on our city and what's available to us. A prime example was the sports complex that was proposed for downtown. It just did not work because those areas were in a floodplain, and it just not, did not make any sense to go down there and build that. So, I was definitely against that, that project for that reason alone. The Haw Creek should be evaluated and looked at as a drainage, and should probably fall under the county in order to maintain it, open it up, and make sure that it has as much flowway through there as possible. And we also need to evaluate debris in the city and make sure, in the rivers, and make sure they're cleaned up as much as possible as well, so we can maintain flows and ensure that we don't create dams within our waterways.
Back in 2008, I was in boot camp, and as a result, I did not experience the devastating flood that shook the city. But when I came back from the Navy, I lived with my older brother on Riverside Drive south of 27th Street, and I witnessed firsthand the Flat Rock River overflowing and coming halfway up his property. I would like to work with the city, county, and state officials to devise a plan to alleviate the stress on the city as much as possible. I propose that a group be identified to work with the state and local officials to ensure the community's needs are met. There are also avenues that could be explored to include grants that are available to help strengthen existing waterways or divert storm flows.
Yeah, the, the trick with this, I think, is understanding that when everybody owns something, nobody owns it, right? So, the trick is having a very clearly identified line of responsibility. Who will manage that, and who has that responsibility? And I think it's less important that it's particularly at the county, or the state, or even the city, is the fact that it is consistently with that person, and there's clear lines of accountability to who owns that. To my knowledge, nothing has been done since the flood of 2008 to address the velocity of the spillways and the, and the decreased water throughput through Haw Creek. And I know that's, that's an ongoing problem. And as time goes by, the need to dredge those out and increase the amount, the amount of water flow through those waterways is only increasing in severity. We risk, we risk yet another major economic, I won't call it a catastrophe, but hardship from another, maybe not another 2008 flood, but something smaller scale, right? Some insurance companies are saying that, you know, we can't get insurance. You know, there's obviously been a lot of development on privately-held land, hospital, and certain Cummins facilities have done that, too. There are still large portions of the city and of the county that are largely unprotected and have not been appreciably improved since then, and time has just exacerbated the condition. So, I think we need to, you know, wherever that echelon is, the county, state, wherever it is, and we need to have someone paying attention to that thing, because no one's going to be hit harder economically by the event of another water, of another water hardship than we will be.
This is actually a pretty complicated question, and I, and I'll have to admit, I'm not well-versed on flood control. So, I think we have to work with the various agencies to see who really does control that creek. I thought I heard somebody say one day, "DNR has control over that waterway." So, does that mean the county can do anything? I'm not so sure. But I think we have to talk to the county drainage board to get their input, and also talk to DNR to see what can be done, because you're, 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 you'd be affecting a wildlife habitat, I believe, so you've got to be careful what you disturb. And yeah, it probably would be a good idea to clean up some of the debris, especially stuff that's not natural should definitely be cleaned up, especially if it's causing a logjam.
Well, I lost my house in the flood, so I know a lot about the flood. And there's several things you can do. You can do nothing, that's what we've been doing. You can get a regulated drain, which lets the county decide what's going to happen in the city. That's a lot of problem. Or you can get a stormwater utility. 200 cities in Indiana have stormwater utilities. We're not one of them. That allows you to have the taxing authority, just like the regulated drain does, so you can clean the drains, you can clean the rivers. It talks about all the rivers, not just Haw Creek. So, there's a lot to this. We have the studies, we have the neighborhoods, how much it's going to cost, which ones should be saved, which ones should be protected, and not to build where we shouldn't build. And that's why we have sprawl. So, we need to clean out Haw Creek. We can't stop 11-inch rain, it won't work, but we can stop an 8-inch rain, and we might have a lot of those. So, we need to get on that. Nothing's been done.
So, I think a lot of extensive studies have been done on what to do about Haw Creek, and regardless of the different solutions that have been investigated, I think different areas get affected regardless. So, either Second Street gets affected, or further down towards Seymour. So, I would also look towards, look to the drainage board to make a recommendation as far as what to do with Haw Creek. And I also agree with cleaning it up and just keeping debris out of the way, and trying to find the best solution that would impact negatively the least amount of people, so.
Okay, so, the first part of the question, what should the city do to manage flood hazards from Haw Creek? So, of course, there are some new monitors that were put in place to try to give us a little bit of warning when water's coming, but that really doesn't address the issues that we have with some of the current waterways like Haw Creek. I mean, we might know it's coming, but it doesn't help with the issues of water flowing through that area. I met with members of the county and the drainage board on numbers, on a number of occasions about Haw Creek and about making it a regulated drain. You know, there's, there's some concern there. I mean, I think, I think we need to make a decision about it. We all look at Haw Creek and we see the aesthetics of what that is, and if we make that a regulated drain, what does that mean? If the county's in charge of that and we're just going to dredge it out, you know, I think that there are some concerns. I think safety's important for the city in protecting us from flood, but I also think we need to be careful with what we do in order to regulate that, because if we put it in the hands of the county, we may not have as much control over that piece, that waterway in our community as we had before. You know, as Frank said, stormwater regulation, I think that's a good way for the community to be able to try to find some funding, to be able to do some work on the existing waterways in our community, to try to help with the, the issues with water when they come. So, thank you.
As my peers have said, in 2008, we had one of the worst catastrophes in Bartholomew County. And the answer that I came up with tonight is basically everything that's already been said. In 2008, Bartholomew County experienced the Great Flood of my generation. Some of the fault was the neglect of Haw Creek with overgrown vegetation and no flood walls. Somewhere, someone, somewhere, needs to continually maintain our waterways, and I would support giving the county draining, drainage board the responsibility. We don't need another catastrophe of Bartholomew County. It will be a long time before we can rebuild ourselves. And so, we've got to do something, and we need to do it soon. We cannot keep letting this issue just float on by.
Okay, well, there's not a whole lot that I can say that the other guys, or ladies up here have said, other than, I was part of a flood study that was, three years ago when I took office. There was 30 people on that committee. We had three professionals come in, as well as DNR, and we spent 12 weeks seeing what we could do to protect this. Unfortunately, we paid to get the studies done, and as of yet today, our administration hasn't done anything about that. And I have to sit here and say that it's not the council. It's got to come to the council from the mayor's office. The mayor did pay for a study. She does have an answer. Nothing's been done or said about it since then, and that was back in 2013. So, there's not a whole lot I can say. I did get one thing out of the, out of the 12 weeks that we met, and that was that DNR actually controls Haw Creek now. I'm not in opposition to getting with, I think we should have had a meeting with the county back then, seeing what the county drainage boards was interested in, and seeing how much they wanted to be part of this and let's work as a team. That never happened. So, I think we need to start with that level, talk about it, work together as a, as a team, and move forward from there.
Okay, the next question is a slightly different topic. What should the city's long-term plan be for expanding city parks as the city grows in population? And should the city be selling land along the river as opposed to developing it as a park for use by all residents?
Okay, to answer the question as far as the park, to expand the parks, I think we've got to have someone in charge that is very interested in, in doing that with the parks. Me being the liaison from the council to the park board, and have been for the last three years, we're not getting that working atmosphere with, and I'm not going to mention any names or any offices, but you've got to have a unity that's interested in, in doing that together. Irregards to what people say, the parks is very vital to Columbus, all the green space. When Cummins brings executives in, or brings a potential employer, employee in, they, they're proud of the parks. We've gone away from that. The parks is not in Columbus today what they were five years ago, six years ago. So, we have to really work on that. As far as selling property along the river for development, I think there's, I don't agree with that, but what I've been told is that that land is very contaminated. Shouldn't be anything put on there, maybe green space. I haven't been involved in any meetings yet to confirm that, but, but I do believe that the person that was talking about how, they do know, and I think, you know, that's an extended cost that the city's going to have to pay for some core values, to get some cores out of there to see how contaminated it is. So, and I probably would not support that as a, as a council member.
Just like the architecture of Columbus, city parks are important to every citizen who has children. We like to go and golf, we like to play baseball, softball, throw a frisbee. However, if the land is in a floodplain, talking about the riverfront development, or the park, or anything, it should be protected by the walls, and it should be the responsibility of the developer, since it will likely never 100% be secure, and it will, it will pose a risk to the community. I live at Ninth and Wilson. We have a park. Thank goodness the mayor listened to us, they came in with private donations. We now have a very viable park. For the first time in years, I have seen people at that park. For the first time in years, I have seen people at that park playing basketball, having activities, having cookouts, something we'd never seen before. And I think that before we sell anything on the riverfront or we go with the, the development of the park, we really need to consider what is on the table.
Okay, so, city's long-term plan for expanding parks. I think it was last year, Daskel, you have, or a year before, the Parks Department put together a strategic plan for growth of opportunities, sports, different things that were kind of on the, the horizon for the Parks Department in our city. And through that process, I think they probably identified some areas where there needed to be some additional parks. When I served on the park board, I can tell you what, every time that there was a new residential development of any time, that developer was coming to the park board and saying, "I've got this piece of property over here that we can't really fit a house on that sits over in the corner, but we don't want to be responsible for the maintenance. Would you like to have it? It'd be a great place to put a park in this neighborhood." And the city accumulated property that way fairly quickly for a number of years. And then finally, at some point, the park board decided that instead of accepting those gifts, that they were going to say, "Wait a second, we've got existing parks that we need to make sure that we're maintaining and as soon as we continue to do this, it becomes difficult." I think one of the things we have to recognize is there's a different concept of what park is in our community. It can be green space. It doesn't have to be a highly maintained piece of property and I think it's important that we recognize that so that we can continue to grow the park system for the community. As far as riverfront development, that's all about Riverwalk development. I think that that's something that's going to happen in the future and I think it's a little premature to talk about selling property that is along the river at this point. Thanks.
So, I think the city has a plan currently, a strategic plan for developing the parks, but I think it would be important to ask, how does this park make our city unique? Is it opening? Is it welcoming? Does it bring people in? You know, parks enrich people's lives, they bring people together and they build communities, so I think it's very important to maintain the parks that we have. And I also do not support selling land that's on the river. I think it's important for the city to keep that land so we can better control and maintain what happens on the riverfront.
Ryan gave you a primer on exactly what happened to the parks. We were just given remnant land and we got too much land and we couldn't afford to take care of it and wasn't really usable. So, there's a plan for that and he covered that pretty well. The selling of the land, the mayor just brought this up the other day. I told her, "You can't sell that land. You just can't do it." I pointed out why she couldn't do it. She wasn't interested. If you take the floodway part, you can't develop the floodway. You've got a road through the middle, you can't develop the road. You have setbacks. You can't, you end up with nothing. There's no room to build anything on these, on this land she wants to sell. I don't understand why it's even brought up. It got everybody upset, but there's nothing going to happen with that land because it's not usable. So, the floodway determines that. It's a cliff and there's water and trees and you can't use it. So, don't worry about it, it's not going to get sold.
All right, the first part. Gee, I thought we were running for city council here. As, of course, as the city grows, we should always consider adding more green space and I think as the city grows and we increase our tax base, to Ryan's point, we can afford to maintain new parks. Because parks do add to one of the many amenities that would attract people to this city or to keep them here. Nobody wants to live in an asphalt jungle. If you want to live in an asphalt jungle, you go to New York City. Even they have a park. So, if you look at the State Street implementation plan that I was happy to work with Councilman Bunch on, we're actually going to have some pocket parks in there. They're not going to be big, they're not going to be fancy, but they're going to be some green space because it's important to add green space where we can. Now, as far as the land around, the land around the river, now the question is, why are we selling land around the river? Now, I'm going to answer the question exactly. I'm not going to offer my opinion on it. The reason you would sell it, if it is sellable, is to generate income from the sale of the land and also it would go on to tax rolls and it would start paying real estate taxes. That's the reason to sell it. Now, it is, could, it is in the floodway, so you have to deal with that and also if there is contamination, I keep hearing, there's a lot of contamination. Well, by golly, let's find out how much contamination is there.
Yeah, to Russ's point, you can't make informed decision then, these things, until you don't know what the costs and benefits are, right? And one of the best ways to really find out what something's worth is to put it out on the market for sale and let the public vote on it, right? Everybody wants, you know, we get these appraised values of our home and then you put it on the market and something different comes out and you say, "Well, my house is worth it?" No, the house is worth what's willing, what someone's willing to pay for it, not a penny less, not a penny more. And as fickle as those markets are, that's how they work. I think Ryan raised a really good point too about flood plains. You could, you could build a flood wall, but the water's going to go somewhere and you're just going to push it from one place to another and maybe you can say, "Well, these people are more special than the others' people, so these people will get flooded and these people don't." But I'm not a fan of that approach. So, you know, you either, you either get the water moving further downstream or we come up with some kind of retention system where we, we could park it somewhere until the water can be absorbed or evaporated and those types of things. You can't just build a wall and expect to float along, right? Unless you want to build Noah's Ark, your driveway or something, that might work, but you know, this is the kind of thing that takes, takes more than just city involvement, it takes regional involvement too, right? I appreciate that some people have vision where they can see farther down the road. You know, if you go to Chicago where you can go up Lakeshore Drive, isn't that nice how you can drive along the lake and not have tall buildings obstructing your view of the lake? It's because years ago, they decided, "You know what? We're going to build a road here and we're not going to let anybody build their development obscure the view of that." And there's public green space all along the lake up there. It's beautiful. You get into Millennium Park and you know, all of, towards the area on the north side. And you know, those types of things would be important here. I just, we don't want to get upkeep of our parts, parks out of control.
In the long term, the city should make every effort to preserve areas for development and usage as city parks. It would be nice to grow our parks in parallel to the expansion of our city, but before we can do that, we need to make sure that our current park acreage is adequate, is adequate and usable. Noblet Park, for instance, is a beautiful park, but there isn't much there to draw in patrons. Currently, I'm a part of a committee canvassing Columbus area residents and businesses for investment to help develop a frisbee golf course at Noblet, which we hope could be a catalyst that encourages increased usage. As for the land around the river, it seems to be a good way for the city to gain revenue while also encouraging the development and growth of our downtown area.
We have a world-class park system in our city and we should be proud of it, but it takes monies and dollars to maintain that. So, before we expand, we need to make sure we do have infrastructure improvements in our existing parks are well-maintained and taken care of and then we need to look at expanding in those areas, especially as our city grows. As far as the development of the property along the riverfront, I'm totally against that. I don't think we need to be doing that. The property is not suitable for development and I think it would actually cause us more flooding issues along the river there if we were to go in and do that work, so.
Okay, now, an easy one. Is the current zoning ordinance adequate for regulating confined animal feeding operations in the two-mile jurisdiction area for the city? In other words, could one be built within two miles under the current zoning ordinance? Is the current county zoning ordinance adequate to protect important recreation and tourism areas in the community and does that matter to Columbus residents?
In relation to the two-mile, I think we do have adequate protection within that area for the city's sake and I think there are some limited areas that, that could be in question, but for the most part, we do have adequate planning and zoning in place to protect us in the two-mile radius. As far as the county's concerned, we are county residents as well, so yes, it does affect the city. So, whenever there's a feedlot developments, confined feedlot developments, then we do need to be concerned with that and we do need to look at them to, to ensure that they're done properly and that they have adequate services to remove the waste and it doesn't create a contamination or get into our waterways or our water streams and, and create problems for all of us in the city. So, yeah, it is a concern of mine in the county because I am a county resident, so.
Well, I'm terribly sorry about this question, but I'd prefer not to speak for my brother on this and I cannot find a note for this question.
Yeah, you know, it really depends on the size of what's under consideration, right? You know, a couple cows in the field is not, not really likely to cause a big problem, but if you go into larger operations like a CAFO, you, at some undefinable point, you get into an area where you really need to be deliberate in, in planning how that's going to go. I've lived some places where those plans were made and it's really had a negative effect. Anybody ever drive north out of, out of Denver heading towards Greeley, Colorado on I-25? You'll smell Greeley from ten miles downstream because of all the feedlots that are out there, massive cattle operations, you know, the Ogallala livestock auctions and all of the other stuff in the area. And the people in Greeley are just, "Well, we're used to it, no big deal." But think of the message. I mean, I'm here talking to you in Indiana about Greeley, Colorado and how much it stinks. That can't be great for economic development in Greeley, Colorado, right? And I just, I think, you know, we need to do, as Tim said, we need to be extra diligent in understanding that the impacts to our air, our water quality, potential for ground contamination, or there's fertilizer, pesticide considerations. We need to understand, we really have all those things on the table to understand the impact of those things and then try to put a cost to those things, right? If there was a case where, worst case happened, what a cost to clean up? And then we can start to look at, you know, what, how the cost-benefit balance will be struck.
Obviously, these combined animal feeding operations are not very popular, except for the farmers that have them. So, it's a good thing we do have that two-mile exclusion. I know I've heard some county residents complain about having that two-mile exclusion, the fact they can't do what they want with their land, but it's good that we have that. Otherwise, somebody could build one of those feedlots right on the city limits and I don't think we want that. But a good point that Mr. Shuffitt made it was about, we are county residents. We make up a good portion of the county's population and we need to make sure the county council and the county commissioners know what we care about these things. We pay county taxes. They represent, I know where I live, Chris Ogil is my county councilman. We need to let them know, when anything's being considered out in the county, what we think about it and if they don't listen to us, you let them know on election day. Thank you.
The lake at the Boy Scout Camp, Louis Ernst, was contaminated by pig operations and so the kids can swim in it. Now, Greeley, they go west, young man, and that's where they can take these feedlots. There's states out there, they have 200,000 people in a whole state. We have 5 million and we're, we're not that heavily populated, but this state, this county is too populated to be put these heavy feedlots in with these ponds full of manure. It just doesn't make any sense for our, our county to do that. And out, out in the west, unless somebody noticed, they need some topsoil and maybe they could start building some with all this stuff that we don't need, maybe they could use. So, they could have the feedlots out there and I'd be perfectly happy. So, I don't think we're going to have them within the two-mile limit and I don't really want them in the whole county.
So, I would not want to see any operation like this affect the people, businesses or the environment in any type of negative way. Last year, after those two CAFO operations came to the city, it was very highly contested and the county commissioners actually developed a CAFO study committee that should be coming out with a study either, I think it's this month, this month or next month. So, I would work with the county commissioners, depending on the results of that study, to adjust appropriately. However, I am a very big proponent of eating and shopping local. So, support your local farmers. It's better for you, it's better for everyone, so. Thanks.
Good answers up here. This, this starts with the relationship between city government, county government, conversations about what each other's needs are, what they want to have happen. I think it's really important that we protect the two-mile jurisdiction. I know we don't want to talk about sprawl, but Columbus continues to grow and we need to be able to recognize where that growth is going to happen, as much as we'd like to see it happen in, on the interior, it's going to happen on the outside as well. And so, that's part of that relationship with the county and the city and trying to understand what the needs of the city are going to be in that two-mile jurisdiction. I'm not in agreement with CAFOs within that jurisdiction certainly, but I think that the conversations between the city and county are going to continue to come up and I think that it's going to be a case-by-case conversation. And I certainly hope that the county shares the study that they've had on this with the city so that we can pay attention to what they've learned and we can make sure that we're in agreement and we don't make mistakes.
I do not agree with the CAFCO. I'm going to defer this question to my cohort, but I would strongly advise each council member, whether they be city or, or city or county, to listen to all proposals and figure out, you know, what is best for us. And I agree with what was said to you just a couple minutes ago. If you don't agree, show up on election day.
Okay, well, I, I do agree that we need to, our zoning should probably be tightened up a little bit or, no, ordinances redone and I'm actually on the committee for the city that we are rewriting ordinances, not necessarily just this one, but looking at all of them to make it better. So, I would, I would support it staying with, staying outside the two-mile radius. I think people in Columbus, we have to watch out of waterways, especially since Columbus sits on a big lake. And if we get into a situation where they, they have a big pig farm right on the, on the city limits, and I'm using that as an example, that it probably wouldn't taste real good going through your water. So, I'm, I'm very big opponent of making sure that we, we keep it that way and if we can, stiffen the ordinances up and that's what we're working on today.
Okay, the next question is, what should the city do to make our community safer and more usable for bicyclists and pedestrians? And along with that, how would you prioritize the various sections of the bike slash people trail development?
Okay, well, one is that I'm, I'm a big proponent of being able to have people trails and bikes, bicyclists and walkers, being able to use the same path, if you, if you will. It's not really what you'd call a path, but I am very instrumental in the one on, working on the one on State Street, which will connect, hopefully, we will get it completed, it will connect Indiana Avenue, which will have bike lanes, the new Indiana Avenue. And then, once we get to that point, start one on Mar Road that will get people from those apartments and the homes over there to like Walmart so we can make actually a circle around, around Columbus. The Parks Foundation has been very instrumental in helping out on those. They have not been asked by certain people to be involved with the State Street project, which I think is very wrong. I think it needs to be, State Street needs to be just like going out River, River Road towards Owens Bend. I, I'm just very big proponent of that and I really can't say a whole lot more other than, as long as I'm around, I'm going to be a thorn in somebody's side till we start getting something done over there. Thank you.
In 2009, I moved into where I am now in the general area. And the new administration in 2012 or 13, I don't remember exactly the, the date of institution, but they developed the COPH unit. And COPH basically stands for Community Oriented Policing Problem and the Solving Unit. It's made a vast improvement in our area. My neighborhood, for example, is a lot safer and I'm happy that I can sit here and say, by my own vision, that our crime, crime rate, crime rate is dropping. And to finish out the question, bicycle lanes should be expanded and the people trails should reach all areas of the city and public safety should always, no matter if you're city council, no matter if you're county council, be the number one priority. If the money is available, I would look at expanding all the bike trails. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. How should the city make the community safer and more usable for bicyclists and pedestrians? Bike lanes are easy, road diets are harder, but road diets make a lot more sense. I was involved early on with State Street in the early conversations with NDOT about trying to get a road diet out there. Lawrence Brown and I spent many hours in NDOT office down in Seymour, trying to get them to understand that that was going to be the real catalyst for redevelopment in that section. So not only can road diet make things safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, it changes the way you view any given area that you pass through. When you walk a sidewalk and you look at something, it's a whole lot different than when you drive it by car. So slowing traffic down, changing the way people use those areas, make a huge difference for economic development, the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists, and the ease of accessibility. You know, the other thing that's really important, safe routes to school, trying to identify where people are traveling, where you have the greatest number of people traveling, so you can try to make those the safest routes. As far as prioritizing bike trails and development, I think there's a couple things you need to work with the Parks Foundation. I think there's property owners that are involved in that. Anytime you want to do a people trail expansion, you have to get right-of-way from property owners, so some of that will dictate where those expansions go. So I think it's just working with the community in general, try to figure out what the best directions are for expansion are. Thanks.
So there's a lot of things that we can do to make Columbus more biker-friendly, one of which is educating the public on how, on road safety for both bikers and pedestrians, both cars and bikers, right? So when a biker gives a signal, do the cars know what that means? Also, working with the federal government to do a walk and bike assessment. They can do these evaluations for safety in your community, so that would be one easy thing to do. Thoughtful planning and working with Campo to ensure safety and compliance with federal regulations. And then the second heart, part of the question was about the people trails. So that, that one, we would prioritize the people trails based on which ones the city owns. That way that we would not have to incur that initial expense of acquiring the property and be able to fill in the gaps based on the property that we already have access to, and improving safety while being as realistic as possible.
Our Parks Foundation, as mentioned, is the key for the people trails, and they are the ones that have been behind it. They've been raising private funds. We do not use tax money for people trails. So that needs to be encouraged, and it will continue. And they're knitting the whole system together, and they're doing a great job, and they're moving quite fast. The federal government mandates, on any roads that we use federal funds on, that they have bike paths, and so that's being done. One of the things that's going to have to happen is people are going to have to use them. We have them, and I don't see a lot of use. So I want to see a lot more use of the bike trails myself. The mention of Campo, a lot of us are in favor of that, but the current mayor is not in favor, and she wants to eliminate or reduce it to part-time. And it's a shared thing between the city and the county. And the federal government pays everything, so it hardly costs us anything. And to get eliminated is, is not a smart idea.
Okay, to the first part, what should the city do to make our community safer? Had a real simple answer. Continue the development of people trails and connect existing ones. I think we have a lot of great trails. Now we've got to get them hooked up together, so you're not having to go down streets that are not even, they're not even marked as a bike path or bike lane. And one thing I'd like to see is, when we do lanes along the road, when you come to a right-turn lane, that's a little scary if you're on a bicycle, because you actually have to cut across to the left and get in the right lane. And when I'm riding on 17th Street, I spend more time looking over my shoulder than I do looking forward. So I'd like to see that fixed. Now, as far as how would you prioritize, the, everybody agrees the expert is the Parks Department or the Parks Foundation. We need to work with them. They've started this, they have it going. And we need to ask them, where's the best place to put them? And of course, with the restrictions that we have to deal with, such as right-of-way and who owns the land. So again, work with the Parks Department and Parks Foundation. But the big thing to me is let's get them connected to each other.
Yeah, I think Russ has the right idea here, is getting the people trails connected to each other. We also need to, I think, focus on maintaining what we have before we go further out into distant expansion. You know, there are certain parts of the people trail, like in Noblet Park, we were down there cleaning up a bunch of trash and stuff not too long ago, and the people trail down in Noblet Park was just a mess, right? The concrete was all, partly because it's by the waterfront, and you know, maybe the foundations and stuff are unstable there. But, you know, it has to be in good shape, or people won't use it. And if people won't use it, well, then, you're kind of, your whole justification with that goes away. So I'd like to see us do whatever it takes to make long-term, sustainable improvements and repairs to the people trail system, and then build it out to where they connect together. I think this will go a long way towards improving safety. We, you know, there are ways to make cyclists safer on public roads, but I think nothing is as safe as getting them off the road and onto a people trail or some other thing. There's a speed difference between a bicycle and a car in that close proximity. I don't know about you, but when I'm out riding, it scares me, right? And, and the fact that I can do everything right and still get plastered on somebody's windshield, because it's not up to me whether I live or die on a daily basis. So I think we need to do what we can, and then make intelligent decisions about the risks we're willing to accept.
Citywide road repairs and projects such as the State Street development will allow for smoother, safer road travel, as well as the addition or repair of pedestrian walkways. I propose an extended financial plan of two to three years that would allow for a bigger picture view of projects that need to be done, so that the budgeting and planning can be done more efficiently.
The Parks Department recently conducted a study to look at the bike-ped plan and put into, they, they developed a plan for a bike-ped plan. But now it's important for us to implement that plan. We haven't done anything with it. We need to go back and evaluate it, to look at it, to see if it does make the most sense for us. But it does us no good to do a plan and not implement it. So that's one thing I would try to do. The other thing I think is, we've done a great job when we've developed new roads, such as 17th Street, Car Hill Road, things of that nature. We put all the lines on and everything else, and we've created bike lanes, but we didn't do anything with them where they end. They just simply end, and there's no direction as to what we do. So we need to address that and make sure that's correct, and implement a plan city-wide so that we can connect those areas or get those trails tied into the people trail, so it's a much safer route. As far as a priority, I think it is important for us to connect our existing people trails that we have in place. We've now completed a phase that got us to Lafayette, Lafayette Street. We need to connect it on to downtown to the parks, and that would allow us then to connect into the 46 corridor and tie everything together. So that would be my priority.
Next question is, there's been some discussion of money to get various things done. So the next question is, does the city need a wheel tax to fund improved infrastructure?
Currently, I would say no. When you look at our cash reserves the city currently has, I think it's important for us to use those monies up first. Before we go and start creating a new tax and creating a new burden hardship on our citizens, we need to utilize our existing funds, put them into place, and then to evaluate where we're at at that point in time. So I would say no. I do not want to see us do a wheel tax until we absolutely need to do that.
I do not support any new taxes at this time. The city's cash reserves are at what I would consider to be a healthy level. I think the most helpful course of action, in my opinion, would be what I've mentioned before, a forward-thinking plan spanning two to three years into the future that addresses budget constraints, potential pitfalls, and the desired improvements citywide.
Well, unless a misunderstanding, this is a yes or no question, so I'll answer it simply. No.
Actually, I got not quite the, a small answer like that. But I am against a wheel tax of any kind. Our city currently has sufficient funds to keep the city running and to also fund improvements, so no new taxes.
No.
I would not support a city wheel tax unless we absolutely needed it for maintenance for roads and repairs and that kind of thing.
I am not in favor of a wheel tax at this point. Thank you.
Can we all just be elected to city council and get the job done?
I am no, not in favor of a wheel tax either at this point in time.
You guys are too fast for me.
Okay. Next question is, sort of relates to the question of sprawl and infrastructure in a, in a sense. Would you support new bus routes to the west side of the city? I suspect the person writing this question is thinking about areas like Tipton Lake. What do you think about relocating the bus terminal to the east side of the railroad tracks to minimize routing delays when trains come through?
To answer the question, yes, I would, I will support the new route on the west side of town. Actually, they have the route drawn out. It is definitely, it's going to be going. Only thing that they're waiting for now is getting the government or the federal stamp to give approval. FTA has to give them approval on their new route. They have came down and drove the route. They've timed it for the city. So everything's a go for that, until they give us a stamp, it can't get started. So you are going to have a new route that's going to go through, go by Tipton Lakes. Like, actually, it's going to go down Merchant Mile, back out on 46, it's going to go through West Hill, come out on 46 again, it's going to go out to 350 West, go over to Goldilocks Boulevard, and go around through the apartments over there and come back out. So you are going to get a new west-side transit system out there. So that is a go, waiting for the government to say, yes, we can do that. Been told that it's going to be next month. We have no idea when it's going to be. We're, the city of Columbus is ready. We're just waiting for the government to give us that stamp. And I'm sorry, I didn't remember the, the second. I, I, I'm sitting here, we've got a beautiful transit system over there now, a terminal, but I have no idea why it was put where it was at. It needs to be centrally located. That's nothing against anybody, but you know, that would alleviate your problem with, with the train, if it was centrally located downtown. And I've got a great recommendation of the Second Street, I'm, yeah, over on Second Street where the old RMC building is at now would be a great transit place.
Public transportation should be expanded to reach every corner of the city of Columbus into Bartholomew County. But we all know, as we've heard in recent weeks, there are railroad stipulations and changes that are being proposed. Until we honestly know what those changes are going to be put down as far as the overpass, everything like that, until it's all laid in concrete, everything needs to remain the same. But once we see it in black and white, for lack of better terms, then yes, I would support not only the transportation to the west side, but also moving the train depot to the other side of the tracks.
So this is interesting. It's, it's public transit conversation, and it's train conversation. It's kind of an interesting thing here. Yeah, expansion of public trans, transit is hugely critical for our community. It's a huge amenity for people who live in Columbus to have an opportunity to be able to use public, public transportation to get where they need to go. Yeah, if anybody comes in on 46 West in the morning, you see what kind of traffic we've got backed up on that road. Any opportunity that we can get to try to get some of those cars off that road and using public transport, using public transit to do that back and forth, that's critical. Once we add 17 trains a day, or whatever the count might be in the future, just imagine what that's going to look like. So as far as the location of the transit depot is concerned, I think is, it would, it would be my hope that we continue to expand public transportation in, in Columbus, that we're, quite frankly, not going to have any choice but to, to make a decision about moving the depot somewhere else. So I think that those are all things that are going to be decisions that will be made in the future, and I think we just need to make sure that we can continue to support expansion of public transportation for everybody who lives in Columbus.
So I definitely support expansion of public transportation of any kind. I think this reduces the number of vehicles on the road and reduces pollution, and then in turn reduces taxpayer spending on the wear and tear of those roads. I think that extensive research would need to be done to determine the cost analysis and the cost benefit of moving that transportation area, sorry, the, the terminal, yes, thank you, the terminal, yeah. But I would also hope that we would consider the south side as well in our analysis for that.
Talking about something that's already done, so it's just a matter of initiating it. They wanted to make it run down to Wellsboro. They haven't been able to figure that one out, and I don't think they will. As far as moving that terminal, terminal is two years old, maybe, half a million dollars minimum. They're not going to move that terminal. They might get a, a place to put the buses, storm at night, but I don't see a new terminal coming anytime soon.
Okay, like we, like we already know, a new route is being added this year, which we hope will start soon. Now, we could also see if we need any more routes over there. We have one, but of course, you'd have to do a study and do the cost benefit analysis, see if we'd have another route over there. As for location of the bus terminal, it's easy to say, pick it up and move it. But like Frank just pointed out, we spent half a million dollars on that. So I would think, I would only think about moving it if the trains were actually causing significant and constant delays. And as an alternative to moving it, maybe we could adjust the timing of the routes in order to avoid when trains are expected, which is easy to say when there's only four a day. Now, when it's 17 a day, then all bets are off on that. But until that, and that increased rail traffic's not going to happen for at least seven years. So we'll get a few more years out of this building before we have to think about moving it.
Yeah, so the, the problem with entertaining the idea of moving the train stations, you've, or moving the transportation out for the bus station, is you've only solved one problem. Then you move on to the next one. Now what else needs to be moved to account for the trains? Right? And then you're always just going after, it's like that game of whack-a-mole at the pizza, at the pizza place we always take our kids, right? No endorsement of pizza place implied.
Chuck E. Cheese.
Chuck E. Cheese, yeah. Right? So the, the real root issue is, is how are we going to manage the increase in rail traffic? I mean, isn't that the real problem here? And it, it's not just an issue of do we build an overpass, or what does the overpass need to build? Look, what is the best way to manage this? Well, we have a, a train company that wants to increase rail traffic, and we've got a city that would have a lot of economic disturbances, both from bus and for all those things, right? So by my view, if the train traffic is increasing a lot, and the train is making out, and the railroad company, Louisville and Indianapolis, is making out like bandits from it, they can afford to chip in for a part of the economic costs that they are incurring, right? And if they're not benefiting much from it, then we should be able to pay them to run at only certain times a day, or reduce certain, below a certain minimum, and minimize our costs. I just don't see how we're going to recoup 30 or 40 million dollars worth of expense on underpasses and moving buildings around and all this, anytime soon. That would buy you a lot of inconvenience if you're the, if you're the railroad, in terms of having to run trains at only certain times a day or night.
So as it was mentioned, there's already a, a expansion of public transit. But in addition, Nathan says, if more expansion is needed, I would be willing to listen to citizens' concerns and work to accommodate their needs. Moving the bus terminal is an idea that I would definitely be willing to explore. If that would help travelers, I would work on trying to find an adequate solution.
Like we've talked about, we do have a new bus route that's going to start on the west side. But I think it's also important for us to look at the Wellsboro area. It is a very high concentration of workers going to that area, and oftentimes, those are individuals that need transportation means to get to and from work. And if the living places are in town, downtown areas and such, then they do need public transportation to get those people to the, to and from those locations. So I, I think Wellsboro is probably a bigger critical for us to look at than just to the west side, because we do have the west side in place. And as far as the train traffic goes, I think it's a, a wait-and-see type of approach we're going to have to take on this. If it becomes an issue, then I think we will may need to relocate our terminal to adequately ensure that our buses are running on time, so that we can get people to and from their destination as needed.
Okay, the next question is, one, I'm Okay, the next question is one, I'm going to expand this a little bit from the questions that the candidates have seen already, because it came to my thought process as I was reading it. Do you support solar photovoltaic installation and distributed generation of electricity at the airport? And I would expand that to say that if you do such a project, it could not only benefit the airport, but potentially the educational institutions that are in the airport area, and perhaps even the apartments that are being built, et cetera. And the related question is, would you support use of TIF funds for such a project?
I think we need to look at all avenues of opportunities that exist out there. One concern about putting in a large-scale solar system would be the, the available land that's out there, that the land that would take up. We have a limited amount of shovel-ready work, we've already talked about, shovel-ready land available in the city. And if we take over more land, that means that development's going to go somewhere else, it's going to expand beyond that point. So, you would have to really weigh the options between what the benefits is versus what the cost is, and then determine whether it's the, the right thing to do. But I would, I would approach it very cautiously, and I think there would be a benefit both for the airport as well as the institutions there in, in recouping this energy. And I apologize, what was the other that you added? Oh, as far as the T, the TIF funds, no, I, I don't think we need to use the TIF funds to implement that. I think it's something that has to pay for itself and have to rely on itself to implement it.
Nathan says that anytime a renewable energy source can be used, it should be considered. He, he thinks that photovoltaic installation would undoubtedly not only have a positive impact in the airport, but probably the community as a whole. And in his opinion, this would be a good opportunity to spend the TIF dollars.
Yeah, you know, we, we all support the idea of looking at energy alternatives, because there's a lot of our prosperity involved in the sources of energy we use to live our lives and, and operate our economy. Unfortunately, solar is still so far along, it, it's not far, far enough along, where it's a cost-effective option almost by any stretch. It's about an order of magnitude still to, for, if you look at a standard one and a half watt photovoltaic cell, right? In order to be cost-effective, you have to be able to store that, and when you store the energy, you're losing energy in conversion. You use seventy-five percent, eighty percent, and then it sits in a battery pack, and then it'll have to be converted back. And you can use it as, as part of the grid, and supplement that way. But again, you're talking about an army of photovoltaic cells for just, just a handful of watts of output, right? You're not going to be able to build seven or eight megawatts, or thirty, thirty kilowatts even, of photovoltaic cells anytime soon. It would cost a fortune. And at current cost, energy prices, the, the break-even curve just isn't there. Right? Now, distributed generation may make a lot of sense, but not because of cost-effectiveness, but because of the, the need to have energy redundancy for critical infrastructure. Right? Hospitals are required to have generators in their basement. It makes a lot of sense that we have backup power available for critical infrastructure items. I'm sure our fire stations and our emergency operations centers have standby power as well. Makes a lot of sense that we'd have these types of things available, but solar cells right now unfortunately just aren't far enough long for them to be cost-effective. You can have anything you want when somebody else is paying for it.
So, I am not an expert on solar energy, like my esteemed colleague to my left. Now, I would want to see the studies that tell me that we could get enough energy out of those cells to make it worthwhile. Especially, do we get enough sunshine around here to get a good adequate energy? And then, and then also, what about the real estate to place them on? Now, you bring up, Terry, you bring up the, the setup at Indianapolis Airport. I've driven past that, as I've gone to the airport, and that is a huge amount of real estate. I'm not sure how much power they're generating, but if we need that much power, there's no land big enough at the airport, I think, for all that. Or at least land that we own, that we could go ahead and take. So that's something we have to look at. I am for alternative energy, if, if it makes sense and we can afford it. Now, can we use TIF funds? I would have to ask the attorney for the redevelopment commission if we could even use them for that. We'd also have to think about, because there are limits on what TIF funds can be used for. And also, you have to think about, we would be using airport TIF dollars, the airport does not generate a whole lot of money in its TIF. It barely generates enough to take care of the, the basic needs up there, so we probably wouldn't have enough money to even pay for it.
This technology is not ready for prime time, so it's more of a feel-good thing than a, than a real thing. A learning curve maybe. So they want to do it, they want to try it. They've done it Indianapolis Airport, so maybe they'll want to do it out there. The board gets to decide those things. Should they use TIF money? The TIFs should be usable for that. They get about two to three hundred thousand in TIF money, but they don't get to control the TIF money. The CRC controls the TIF money. And the CRC says, not the CRC actually, it was the mayor that said, we're going to take all your TIF money, and we're going to redo your roads. And that's the way it goes. And they want to save it for their tower, and they're not going to save it for their tower, because that money's going to be taken away from them, and the roads are going to be redone. So they're not going to get to use it for photo cells or anything else.
All right, I'm excited we got this question, because I totally support PV installations. I want to move Columbus forward in a responsibly, environmentally responsible way. PV installations have been used for fifty years now, and they are actually mature in the product lifecycle stage of this product, and they are relatively inexpensive. Rooftop installations have been shown to recoup their cost within nine months to two years of use, so within that range. And they produce ninety-five percent clean renewable energy, so I'm all for it.
Okay, so, a couple of things, yes, solar, yes. Solar at the airport, probably not. The aviation board has a planned development for that property, which unfortunately doesn't include solar fields. And I think it's important that that property get developed to its fullest, so that it can generate TIF dollars that are necessary for some of the things that need to happen on airport properties. So, though I'm a big fan of solar, I think it's a great alternative energy that we should all be looking at, I don't think airport property is where it's at for doing that. So, the TIF, yes, TIF funds could be used for infrastructure involved in solar, that'd be great. But it has to happen in the TIF district. And certainly, it looks as if the airport would be an area where you could do that. But I think unfortunately, the plan for development out there does not include a solar installation at this point. But I'm a big, a big proponent.
Just want to say, yes, I do support the project, and I think that the only way that the TIF dollars need to be used is if there's no other way to pay for the project. We really need to be conservative and make sure that the TIF dollars are used wisely.
Well, my, my answer's going to be pretty short, yes, I am a proponent of solar energy, but I don't know enough about it to sit up here and talk to you about what's going to, what should happen and what shouldn't happen. I, I could just tell you I would support solar power in some form, but that's all, that's all I can tell you.
We're still staying on energy here, I'm sorry about that, but I'll get to other topics here in a minute. Advance Columbus started a city energy inventory, is this still in process? How will it be implemented? What are the target energy savings?
Again, I'm not real diverse on what the city's advancing Columbus has as far as solar, or any kind of power like that. So I'm going to defer this to my counterpart here and see what he has to say.
It is no secret that Columbus and Bartholomew County does need cleaner air. Before any big corporation builds anything in Columbus, every executive on all aspects of the board need to go through a rigorous questioning to make sure that everyone has their cooperation in making Columbus the safest place to live. We have, at one time, we had a lot of smog, a lot of dirty air, and we have tried to clean up our community. But before we bring anything else in, and Golden Foundry comes to mind, various ones, we need to make sure that everybody's in board, and the cleaner air act is something that I'm very, in, much more favor of than most other things.
Advance Columbus City Energy Inventory. Well, first I'll say, I hope so, but I'm going to qualify that by saying that unfortunately, members of the city council have been less than involved by the mayor in her strategic plan for Advance Columbus. So you could ask members of the sitting council any number of questions about the strategic plan, Advance Columbus, and you're going to find that they know very little about the independent committees that are being put together and working on this plan. So, while I think it's a fantastic idea that we would have a committee that would be working on an energy inventory in this community, as a councilman, I can't answer honestly that I know anything about what that committee is doing. Thanks.
So, I Googled Advance Columbus, and I just read about the initiatives that are, that are on there about reducing carbon emissions, and increasing efficiency lighting usage, building design using LEED standards, that type of thing. However, I couldn't find anything about if this was in process, or if it had been implemented. I'm obviously in support of energy audits and things like that, in trying to reduce our carbon footprint and becoming environmentally responsible, but I couldn't find anything as far as what has been done.
Ryan pretty well hit it. I saw this, she trotted it out, said, this is, this is my big plan, and that was the last time I saw anything about it. Nothing has been brought back to us in saying, this is what's going on, these are the committees, anything that's going on. So, we're totally in the dark with the Advance Columbus. And I don't even know the purpose of it, if it's not shared.
Well, I'd hate to agree with my opponent on anything, but, no, I'm just kidding, Frank. I am really not familiar enough with this, I did sort of what Elaine did. I actually downloaded it and read it today, and I didn't see anything about an energy inventory, so I'm not sure there is one. But if there isn't one, it'd probably be a good idea to have one, and to figure out, are, are we wasting energy in any of our buildings? And if we are, we need to correct that, because any extra energy we're spending, we don't, or using, we don't need, it's coming right out of the taxpayers' back pocket, and that's less things we can spend money on.
Yeah, that seems worthwhile to me, I mean, I have LED lights in my home, I think a lot of people are adopting LED lights over those mercury-laden CFLs that were pushed a couple of years back. You know, so on a personal level, I believe in energy efficiency, I think a lot of us do. And we'd like to expect those same, same standards from our local government also, that they do the very best they can with taxpayer funds. But, you know, let's talk a little bit of word, of word about efficiency and cleanliness and a lot of these types of things. It's important for us to make educated decisions about how clean is clean enough, and how efficient is efficient enough, and how safe is safe enough. Because each of us, at a price, can find something that's cleaner, safer, or more efficient. Right? I crossed the parking lot over here today on the way over. Now, I could have reduced my, my risk of exposure to traffic by not coming tonight, but I thought that you guys were worth it. Right? And the risk was tiny, but what if it was a five-lane highway? And what if I, you know, can't walk very well, those types of things, well, now the risk is higher. The point is, there's always a trade-off, there's always a trade-off. And if someone wants to say, well, we should force this building to be more efficient, or we need to do this kind of thing, it's an uphill battle. You know, each public transit route you add is less valuable than the one before it. Each, each level, level of efficiency is less, a lower return investment than the one before it. Each incremental item of cleaner air, right, we can get carbon dioxide down to three hundred and twenty ppm from three eighty. How do you quantify the value of that? Does that affect your life? And what if it costs you a big amount of money? If, if it's not free, then we need to be having very frank discussions about where we're going to place those limits. Because we all want cleaner air, we all want cleaner water, we all want safety. But, but we need to be willing to be honest that there's a limit to the practical expenses, if that makes sense.
Nathan also couldn't find any real quantifiable information about the city energy inventory. But he did say, I can't speak for the city yet, but this is an interest that I have as well. Once all information is gathered, it would be my goal to ensure the best usage of, the best usage of city resources for energy efficiency.
Well, likewise, I do not know of anything as far as an inventory goes, this must be part of the transparency problem we have in the city government. I think it is, it is a critical for us to evaluate our, our energy uses in all of our facilities, and implement good stewardship so that we, we're using the most adequate, up-to-date technology in all that we do. So I would be in favor of that, but I have not been requested, as far as funding goes either, to make any incremental changes as well.
Okay, a question from the audience, where do the recycled materials go from our new curbside program?
Well, currently, from my understanding, that Race Trash has, is taking this project on, and they are taking the materials and separating them. And beyond that, I really do not know where they are going to, but I do know that they are providing the services as far as removal portion from the city.
Yeah, I actually have no idea either, and I don't think Nathan does either. But what I, what I'll say is that as a, as a, and this is from me, I guess, not so much from Nathan, but as a, a citizen who is using this service, it's really nice to be able to, you know, not have to have the responsibility of sorting it myself.
The best part is, it takes number seven plastic too, so we don't have to keep all the lids separately, isn't that, ugh. So yeah, as, as far as I know, it's sorted here locally, then it's trucked up to Indianapolis, and then the sorted, the sorted categories there are then sent on their merry way to be incorporated into various sources for the recycling industry and, and such.
Hey, before I answer that, back to the energy inventory, if none of us sitting up here knew we were doing a city energy inventory, how did you guys know? So, something to think about. I have no idea where it's going, I trust Mr. Shuffitt's answer on that, and, but I too, as a city resident, am glad I no longer have to sort. I used to sort, sort it myself, and I carried it out to the Bartholomew Solid Waste Management District facility out on Mapleton. And I sorted everything and took it out there, so I'm glad I don't have to do that anymore. And I, I know I'm, and I used to always recycle, so I never even had to fill up my trash bin, and now it's even less.
That's an excellent question. I've thought about that several times, when I put all that stuff in the big container, what really happens to it? And I thought maybe one or two of us should go along with that truck and see where it really goes. Because a lot of the stuff that was dumped at Kroger's in those bins ended up in the landfill, no matter what you did. If it, if it was slightly contaminated, it went to the landfill, so it was more of an illusion than a reality, and I would like it to be a reality.
I agree with my peers, and I would like to see, I think right now our recycling program is about forty percent of the city, and I would really like to see more education programs around the recycling and the benefits behind it, so that we can get people to buy into recycling and eventually increase that number to a hundred percent.
Okay, buy into recycling, just do exactly that, everybody. Buy post-consumer recycled goods, buy the products that your products are going to make. That's how we sustain recycling. I mean, I think it's, it's critical, we all feel really good when we separate stuff out, we take it to the curb, we reduce the amount of trash in the landfill, but there's a, there's a market rate for that product, it's a commodity. And if we're not doing the other half of that, which is to purchase products that are made from that content, then the price will never drive itself to the point where it's going to continue to be able to be sustainable. So, as far as where it goes, you know, I trust. So, as far as where it goes, you know, I trust through the contract arrangements that that product is going into the proper hands to go to open market so it can be sold for the type of profit that they need to make in order to continue the service. But if there's anything I've got to say about it is, make sure that we continue to do the second part of recycling, which is to pay attention to the products that you buy, to try to buy products that come from those recycled contents. Thanks.
Strange, it's strange that that question would come up, because I just got off the phone with Brian Burton just a few days ago, who is the warehouse foreman or manager over at City Garage. It is picked up out of the green trash, green lid trash barrels. It's taken up to Indianapolis by Ray's Trash Service. They dump it by the thousands of gallons onto a conveyor belt, and they have a team of people that hand sorts them, and then it's all melted down and sent back to the factories or whatever the process is, and it is resold. And the numbers for the recycling far exceeded in the first month or the first two weeks alone than what the city had prepared for. They thought they would start out with a very, very, very small number, and it would increase. It started at a very large number and continues to go up.
Well, I can't, can't match my counterpart's answer. I talk to Brian all the time, and I do know that the recycling is very, going over very well. They're very excited about it, and hopefully, like they've said down the past here, that more people buy into it. You know, I think there, I think the goal, the realistic goal would be 80% of Columbus be on the recycling. Be great to think of 100%, I don't think it'll ever happen, because there's some people that just, they're not going to buy into it. But I think it's great now. I don't know where it goes. I do know that Ray's is the one that picks it up from the city, but I do know it's going over well, and they continue seeing growth weekly.
This past week, I had an experience in Columbus. I had to buy a new tire, and I sent it to the tire deal. I said, "What happens to the old tire?" And he said, "Well, it turns to," and he used a four-letter word that started with S, which I can't repeat because, and he said, "It goes to Jeffersonville, they grind it up, and instead of putting gravel around tile for septic systems, they put the ground-up rubber around it, and it absorbs the whatever, and it lasts much longer than gravel does." So, the next time you want to know where your tire goes, that maybe is where it goes. Okay, two last questions, which are not on the list. This is sort of like the surprise, you studied all semester, but you forgot to, the professor didn't talk about these two. The first one is for anyone wishing to answer, and I don't think it really applies probably to all of you, but do you have experience, relevant experience, from outside of Columbus or even Indiana that you think can be of value to the issues, taxes, economic development, tourism, et cetera, et cetera, that will become before the city council? And how would that experience be important?
So, I'm extremely new to politics and government and any type of this. However, I think that my experience is completely unique to anyone else, and I was raised differently. I have new perspectives and new ideas, and I think that I would bring that to city council.
I don't live in a vacuum. You know, I have a TV, I have magazines, I have books. I don't have to go somewhere else to find out what else is happening. You can read Scientific American, you can find out all kinds of stuff, and then apply those things. We have magazines that come to people that work, that are in elected positions and what they're doing in other places. We do not have to reinvent the wheel every time on every project, so there's information out there, you just have to look.
Well, Frank just shot me down, but I've lived, I've been in all 50 United States and 16 foreign countries, so I, I do bring a perspective from, and I've lived in many different states. You know, when you're in the military, soon as you get comfortable, oh, you're looking, you really enjoy that town, well, why don't we move you halfway across the country? So, I've lived in a lot of towns, I've lived in big cities, small cities, and like I said, spent 20 years with the military and working at my employer Cummins. I've held various jobs, including management jobs, and I think I could bring a fresh perspective from around the world.
Yeah, similar to Russ, you know, I've traveled extensively internationally, including some sandier locales in this face of this planet of ours. Visited 43 of the 50 states and lived in eight of them. I've seen how they do things in Wyoming, how they do things in Georgia, and California, and Seattle, and Hawaii, and Washington, and, you know, you pay attention to what works and what doesn't work in these different things, and I think I've, I've been able to learn a lot from those experiences. I also have a track record of making, getting things done, right? When I assumed responsibility for the motor pool in Wyoming, they were hiring, the GIs were pressure washing pickup trucks coming back from the ICBM base complex, and it's 120-mile drive out there and mostly on gravel roads. They drive all the way back for these big nuclear warhead complexes, and they'd come back and they'd wash them off, and we go, and I have training obligations. I'm responsible to get these guys trained and qualified and all those other things, and they're out there washing cars all day. This doesn't make any sense at all, I said. Let's look at what it costs to buy a drive-through car wash and make the missleers drive their cars through, and well, it turns out, I could justify paying for that in eight months, but they've been doing it this way for, well, that's the way we've always done it, right? 20 years, 30 years, and so forth. And partly was the idea that the missleers thought they were pilots, and so they should have crew chiefs washing their trucks for them. But, but the reality is, there's always a better way to do something, right? When we had shortage of clearing things down, I got my, I got my CDL for the Air Force, and I hopped in a truck, and we drove the waste material down to Fort Carson rather than paying a contractor hundreds of thousands of dollars to do the same work. So, there's always a smarter way to do things. You've just got to be willing to ask the right questions and think outside the box a little bit.
So, I was a lot like Elaine when I got started 10 or 12 years ago. I mean, I was young, wanted to get involved. I tried to figure out where I could fit in. I was given an opportunity to try to get involved. I had peers that were younger, just maybe didn't have kids or were just getting married. But since that time, I've put together a few years of experience now, working with non-for-profit organizations and working with organizations down at City Hall that I think have brought me a perspective. And while I haven't lived all over the place, I do live in Columbus, which draws people from all over the place that I have had the opportunity to work with, and these are people that bring a whole wealth of ideas and leadership to our community, and these are all people that I've been able to spend time with over the years that have all influenced my decisions that I've made on city council. Thanks.
Thanks, Ryan. No, you're welcome. Thank you. It's good to have people who've been from all over the, all over the world.
Okay, the last question. Has Columbus and the county reached the point where we need a unigov type of governance rather than an us-them governance system?
I would have to say no, we have not reached that size of a community. The city has grown quite a bit, but when you look at the total geographical location of the city versus the rest of the county, now, we have not met to the point where we need to be a unigov in that sense.
I'm actually going to skip this question because I wasn't prompted on it prior.
Yeah, I think we're not anywhere near where that makes sense just yet. There's the, the balance between city population and county population, I think, doesn't justify that just yet, and I'd be concerned about a massive explosion of bureaucracy and just the cost of government getting out of control personally.
No, we're not ready for a unified government.
That's not the real question. We're never going to have a unified government here, because we're not Indianapolis, which is all city, but we could have cooperation. They have park department, we have a park department, they have a city garage, or we have a city garage, they have a county garage. They have, they take care of bridges and drainage, and, and we take care of lots of other things, and we could cooperate on many issues. Certain people do not like county government, and they don't want, actually, she doesn't want to cooperate, but I want to cooperate with the city government. I'm very fond of the commissioners, they're all really nice people, and I think we could do wonders. 350 West needs cooperation, and we could get her done if we just sit down with each other.
Yes, I agree. I think that bringing people together is the key to making life worth living and the world a better place, so I'm a big proponent of working together and collaborating, collaborating to come up with the best ideas and to do what's best to help people.
No to unigov, yes to cooperating with the county. I mean, it's just as simple as that. There are efficiencies between both city and county that can be found. There are mistakes that we have made or that they have made that we can learn from, so I think we just have to make sure that we are working together and we're communicating well with each other so that, so that we just know where both the county and the city are at as they're trying to make decisions for the future, because as everybody said, people who live in the city live in the county, so it has an impact on us both ways.
I would also say no to unigov, and I'll give the mic over to my, the mic over to my opponent, but I also want to say thank you, Mr. Dale, thank you, Priscilla Scowth, and thank you, Mrs. Carmichael, for coming and attending this debate.
No to unigov. That's, that's my answer. No to unigov. I don't think we're big enough to go that far yet. Thank you.
On Thursday night of this week, we will have another forum in which the at-large council candidates and the mayoral candidates will be in attendance, and we will ask them many of the same questions and probably some new ones, just to keep them on their toes also, hopefully. I would like to thank Q-Mix for carrying this out to the, and the airwaves to people that couldn't be here tonight. And I'd like the audience to join me in a round of applause for all the candidates. There's a lot that we think is wrong in this country, but tonight, I think, is when democracy is at its best, when we all sit down and talk about what we think about things and how we would do things and share, and I think that's very important. I also want to thank the library for the use of the Red Room. Each time I visit the library, I'm reminded how lucky we are in this community that the library board members at the time this building was being built dreamed big and constructed a structure reflective of the greatness of Columbus. Thank you also to the audience and members of the Energy Matters Coalition and the Winding Waters chapter for being here, and I will close with good night to all.